PM. Wednesday, October twenty fifth, two thousand twenty three. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance. And then we'll have a roll call with the commissioners and we'll go through the agenda. Commissioner South will lead us in that.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and the Constitution of Constitution of Constitution of
Okay, well, next move to a roll call commissioners will state their names and if they have any conflicts. Starting with Commissioner DeSoto.
Barbie DeSoto, no conflicts.
Robert Knutson, no conflicts.
Daniel Gonzalez, no conflicts.
Lisa Jensen, no conflicts.
Andrew South, no conflicts. Jonathan Hill, no conflicts.
Okay. And our first item on the agenda is a presentation by a group of BYU students. Our, our staff member Jessica will be introducing them.
Yes, I think you commissioned it Gonzales. We have once again had the opportunity to work with BYU for them to create the foundations of what will turn into our Northeast Neighborhood Plan. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to our BYU students.
And please state your, your name and make sure to speak into the microphone. Thank you.
Yes, of course. Hi, my name is Eden Jones. I'm with the city planning internship at BYU. We're so excited to be here tonight. Thank you for having us. We wanted to present some of the things we are developing for the Northeast Neighborhoods Plan, which includes the Sherwood Hills, North Timview and River Bottoms Neighborhoods. Okay, so we are all operating under several overarching goals. We are looking at parking, at trailheads, at rezoning and at some policy restructuring around ADUs. And we'll touch on all of those in more detail shortly. First on our agenda is parking in the Riverwoods area. This is something that we're hoping can kind of form a case study for the rest of the city, but right now we're focusing on the Riverwoods. This area has so much potential and we really want to see it more vibrant, especially the shops, the Riverwoods. A lot of the areas in the Northeast Neighborhoods Plan that we're looking at, we're looking at addressing some of the housing concerns that are found in the Provo General Plan. One of the solutions we're developing for this area is to reduce the minimum parking requirements, perhaps through an overlay as a victory area. Research shows that really high parking requirements are a big, are a huge drain on resources and maybe largely unneeded in this area. Some individuals we've talked to, including those associated with a Vivint business in the area, say that as their general sense of parking is that their parking lot is rarely full. The parking lots for the businesses surrounding are rarely full. And a lot of them just aren't being needs aren't being needed. So we think that by establishing an overlay zone to reduce minimum parking requirements, this will give businesses an opportunity to downsize some of their surplus parking, which will make room for more medium density housing developments like we've already seen approved in this area. And we really think that this will go a long way in helping to fulfill the great awesome potential that this area has. Another thing that some of our groups are working on is trails. We really see a potential for an economic opportunity here as well as an opportunity to work towards the goals that are found in the general plan with regards to preservation of natural areas as well as increasing recreational opportunities. We, since the Corner Canyon area and nearby is already thriving so much, we want to kind of capitalize on that. We want to put in a new trailhead in the Timpin Oaks Park area. And the way we want to kind of approach this is with the twenty twenty Provo Foothills Trail Plan, which is in the implementation process. Currently, it was created by a task force composed of Provo residents, US Forest Service, Utah Valley Trail Alliance and Bygwell Provo. So it represents a lot of hard work and collaboration. And basically, if you, if you can see this diagram, we have the black line you're seeing is the only official trail. And as you can see, there's, you know, blue lines and purple lines and green lines, and those are all potentials for great trails. And the twenty twenty Provo Foothills Trail Plan mainly seeks to make those trails official. So basically just to turn all of the blue and purple and green lines into black lines so that we can really increase the opportunity for recreational amenities here. And we really think that'll bring a lot of good tourism and a lot of good economic benefits to the area. All right. And then something else that we have discussed is rezoning some of the agricultural land found in the area. So what you're looking at right now is the the Arabian Horse Farm off of University Avenue on the same street as Costco by Will's pit stop, and then also some sheep farmland west of Timview High School between University Avenue and Canyon Road. And for now, these areas are fine as they are, but we just want to anticipate for the future when this land might change hands. And specifically, the horse land is currently owned by several different people, including some developers. And so we just want to make sure that we are making plans now for what we want to have happen with the neighborhood in the future when the land is eventually sold. And then as we've seen in like West Provo, sometimes the neighborhood doesn't get much of a say what happens with that land. So we want to make sure that that happens here. So we are talking about rezoning this land potentially for medium density or single family units. So that the neighborhood can maintain its feel specifically with the so the Arabian Farm, we have thought more low density housing. And then the sheep farm, more medium density housing, kind of reminiscent of the heirloom homes next to, next to Timview High. And a similar thing happened with that land in the past. And it was sold to developers and then was made into kind of duplex housing. And the people that live there actually are largely former residents of the neighborhood who, when all their kids were grown, wanted to downsize and just leave the home. And they're quite tasteful and really help maintain the identity of the neighborhood. Oh, yes, sorry. My name is Kendra Hannah.
Hi, I'm Jamie Rowan. I'm the teacher of the class, our third presenter. Car broke down. And so she's not quite here yet. The other thing that we, that the students have been working on is thinking about accessory dwelling units. We know, of course, that the city somewhat recently passed a citywide ADU policy that allows people throughout the city to develop ADUs in their, there is, of course, in, in certain areas where there are overlay zones like the S overlay. It's, it takes a few more processes. Students I know have discovered that there are already a lot of accessory dwelling units in the area. Not all of them have been kind of officially registered as ADUs. Oftentimes they're just kind of built in the process of building the homes. And so we're just thinking about ways, the students are thinking about ways to make that process as easy as possible to both address some of the, again, housing crisis in the city and as a way to again, maintain the feel of the home. This allows for the neighborhoods to be slightly more dense without bringing in housing structures that look really different from what already exists in the neighborhood. I think one of the things that students have, are thinking about is the possibility of lowering the approval requirement that's exists in the application process. Then also maybe streamlining the process a little bit, making some of the language of the, of the ADU. Just, yeah, just a policy or ordinance a little bit easier to understand for residents. That's all we have. I know we have a few minutes for, for questions and, or suggestions. Again, we're really in the process now of developing this initial draft of the Northeast Neighborhoods Plan. Would take any, any recommendations or any questions that you want to ask that would help us clarify some of the things we're thinking about. There's lots more that the students are working on. We just identified these four issues as, as things to present tonight.
And I don't know if I properly introduced you as well. It's the Northeast Neighborhood Plan. Correct? Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the our guests? Go ahead, Commissioner Johnson.
I just wanted to make sure that you had reviewed the goals for the area in the general plan. I assume you have, but a couple of things that jumped out at me were I want to say that one of the goals is preserving agricultural areas, so I would hesitate to, to make the Northeast Neighborhood Plan come right out and say, we want to, we want to get rid of, I mean, I know that wasn't your wording, but some people might interpret it as we're trying to get rid of the agriculture areas. So you want to protect that if that's the wording in the general plan. That was the only thing that just jumped out at me as something that might not go over well and maybe wasn't representative of the goals. So.
Thank you.
Did you have any neighborhood meetings or district meetings and as you worked shop and planned on this?
Yes, we have been working not necessarily one on one, but we have had some residents who've been kind enough to come directly into our class and really get hands on with us with some of these. We haven't had representation from a couple of the different neighborhoods. So we are working to kind of get a better feel for, especially in the River Bottoms or sorry, the Riverwoods commercial area. We haven't really been able to get very much resident feedback, but that's something we're actively working towards. And in the rest of the areas, we have been sending around surveys and making an effort to speak to the people that actually find out what their concerns on and what they would like to see in the future.
Anyone else have any other questions for them?
Hi, I'm wondering how how those people responded or brought up the ADU question? Or what is the, I guess, from the people you talked to, what is kind of their disposition about that particular question? About having ADUs more in their neighborhoods?
Neither of us are personally working with areas that are really focusing on ADUs. I don't know that we can necessarily speak to that.
I know the, the person whose cars broke down on the way here. I know they met yesterday with a resident in, I'm gonna say the North Timview Neighborhood, who's, who was one of the initial people that go through the process of applying for, for an ADU, getting that petition signed by neighbors. They just met with him two days ago, and I'm not sure exactly what they learned from him, but they are trying to meet with people. I know that they've talked with people who live, I think, in the Sherwood Hills Neighborhood. Again, many of whom I think have ADUs that aren't necessarily legal or have gone through those channels, right? And, and just trying to learn more about, about their experience and things like that. So I know they've reached out and are trying to find out. I just don't know what they've heard from, from people.
Anyone else have any other questions? Go ahead.
Some interesting ideas on, on parking in the River Bottoms area. Just wondering if there, it would be appropriate to consider additional public transit connections to that? The goal is to reduce parking in those areas. It might be a little bit more exciting or amenable to people if they're, if they saw really clear, effective ways to get public transit into the other areas of the city. Have you considered that at all? Or I don't know the scope of the, the class, but.
Yeah, yeah, that's actually something that we initially really wanted to do with this area. We're still looking into it. Our understanding is that since there's already like one bus stop in the area that the UTA might be hesitant to really open up anything else, but that is definitely an avenue that we're going to pursue.
All right. Well, thank you for your, your presentation. I, you can go ahead and have a seat. I'm gonna open this up for public comment. If, if anyone who's here in, in the room would like to comment on that presentation or ask any questions now, now would be the time. So just be ready to possibly respond or we might recall you, but go ahead. Please come up and, and state your name and where you live.
I'm just wondering if the city thinks about buying these, buying these agricultural lands, actually turn them into farms and have city people work on the farms for money for the city. Just, just a problem.
Thank you, John. Anyone else like to give a comment? Please come forward. There's anyone else that's coming up? Please, please come take a seat in the front and so we could keep it moving. We do have a seven items on the agenda tonight. Go ahead.
I was planning to say, I think it was something that we have inside. But I'm Jenny Smith. I live in the Dinkley Neighborhood and, and I've been working with one of the groups. And they are working really hard and being good, really good problem solvers and, you know, asking good questions and I'm impressed with them. Since I haven't seen all of it yet, but I would love to see at some point, I'm sure they're going to expand it, more surveys sent out because people that are my neighbors have, I keep saying it's coming, it's coming, it hasn't come yet. They would like to. And because we're farmers, I would love to maybe have, even though I've been in the meetings and I, we haven't talked about the agriculture part, maybe they might want to visit, talk with some of the people who actually own the agriculture property and get some feel from them. Because, you know, their intention about how long they want to, or and maybe some of the neighbors that have that agriculture feel. So those are just suggestions I'm making. And I think, but I think they're really sure, you know, people doing some hard work and I really appreciate them.
Ms. Smith, if you don't mind me asking, how did you become aware that there was students working on this Northeast Neighborhood Plan?
One of the people that was working with them invited several, said, hey, we need some more people. And I said, I'll do it.
What was it? Online outreach, mail?
I don't know how they got it, but they asked me and I said, yeah, I'd be glad to. I live in that Northeast Timview neighborhood. I think be involved with it. So I I don't know how it first started, but.
Thank you. Anyone else like to comment on the public hearing portion of this item? Okay, seeing now we'll close the public hearing portion of item number one. Commissioners, is there anything you'd like to discuss? We won't be, won't be voting on anything. There's not anything for us to really vote on. But if there's any discussion that needs to occur, now's the time. Go ahead, Commissioner South.
I would also really love to see surveys, not just of people's experience in getting an ADU, but also their neighbor's feelings about ADUs. My impression, and maybe I'm wrong, I don't know, has been that the, those neighborhoods don't really want to increase density. I don't know if that's correct assessment or just like, that's the feeling I have. I really like to know what people who live there think. And I don't know, I guess if we can gather any data on, I guess, how it would shift things in terms of, or like, you can't really know a lot of the time, but maybe some predictions about how that could change. I don't know, give people access to different housing types and stuff.
I'm, I'm a little bit curious about how the, the notice and comment like with, with public input went. Not a knock on you guys, but like when we have something that comes in the regular course with an application and a staff report, like I know the city's process for notification, I see the signs go up, you know, you see these things in social media. So you know that there's, there's a set rigid thing for public notice. Maybe we'll ask Jessica if she, if she's still around to take comment on, on that, like how you don't necessarily have to come up right now, but I, I am curious about that. I don't know if anyone else shares that concern. Go ahead, Mr. Snow.
I'm curious, the process as well, and especially what the students are finding out. I live in that area and in fact, I'd be happy to meet and share some ideas and give you some feedback from some of my neighbors. But yeah, I think that's really interesting because that's, you know, that's relatively new. And, and I don't know that we've seen anything in terms of feedback yet on how that process is going. So.
Yeah, like a district meeting. Yeah. Come up, come up on, speak in the microphone. Sorry.
We did have students that presented at the most recent district meeting and took, took input from people that were there and, and was notified that we were on the agenda and so forth. So we have gone through some of the process, of course, the process that we're a part of at least fits within the, you know, timeframe of a semester and, you know, so, so we'll be handing this off to the residents in this, who are already working with us. And then, of course, the planners like Jessica and others who've been working with us. But, but we have been trying to, you know, move through that, that kind of process that you're, I think you're talking about.
More comment?
I don't know, Baron or Jessica, if you want to come up and comment on that.
Yeah. So with regards to how citizens got involved in the first place, the Northeast Neighborhood Plan is something that private citizens in that area have been reaching out and been wanting. And since we have for the last eight or nine years been working with BYU each fall to kind of let them do a groundwork for a plan that we'll be doing. We took that initiative from private citizens, worked with BYU and those citizens who have been asking for the neighborhood plan kind of initiated reaching out to other people in the surrounding neighborhoods to have representatives. So that's kind of how the public got involved with this plan.
This is really just like the first step in.
Yes, this is very much the foundation. We're gonna take what they have. We're gonna build on it, do additional research and surveys as necessary, and then give you a standard plan that you'll recommend to council.
Gotcha. Thank you so much, Jessica.
I have one more question for the students and professor. I'm wondering, did you gather any data like from the GIS lab or anything like that? About, this is, I just want to say, the, our, the Joaquin Neighborhood Plan, and I mentioned this to the staff, but has really good zone overlays with like data, and that would be amazing if that were included because it's quite a lot of work.
Yes, we have been working very closely with the GIS lab on a pretty regular basis to figure out demographics and how it all works together.
Did you, like, so demographics, have you looked at density and income and all? Great.
Any other comments by commissioners? Like I said before, there's no vote on this. Just before we get into the rest of the items on the agenda, a couple of things. One of items that are starred in the agenda which are items number three, five and six. The correct city council date to hear these items is November fourteenth. There, there will not be a city council meeting on November twenty first. That's the, I think, the day before Thanksgiving. And before we move on to item number two, I'm just gonna read the following on the quorum. Although this is a public hearing, only the presenters and those invited by the commission may speak or ask questions unless otherwise invited by the chair. That's me, Daniel Gonzalez. Please wait to speak until called upon by the chair. When speaking, please be sure to speak into the microphone so that the record is clear. Please state your name and city of residence for the record. Please limit side conversations as they interfere with the audio recording. If you need to have a side conversation with planning staff or another member of the public, please step out of the chambers. Please do not attempt to interrupt or speak over people. It, it muddles the, the audio recording of the record. Intimidating or threatening speech or behavior will not be tolerated at any time. Please refrain from clapping or cheering during the hearing unless it's for me. Yeah, we'll, we'll move on to item number two. Garrett Seeley requests preliminary subdivision approval for a fifty-six unit. For a fifty-six unit twin home development on sixteen point five acres and a proposed R one point eight PD. And a proposed R one point eight P D. That's one family residential performance development zone located approximately at ten sixty-nine North Geneva Road. Lakeview North Neighborhood. Uh, I'm, I'm also going to read item number three into the agenda. Garrett Seeler requests a zone map amendment for a P D performance development overlay zone to be applied to sixteen point five acres of land in the R one eight, uh, one family residential zone and ordered create a fifty-six unit twin home development located approximately at ten sixty-nine North Geneva, not, North Geneva Road, Lakeview North Neighborhood. Uh, a staff member, Aaron Ardmore, will be presenting. And, uh, I do want to note, we, well, I'll do this, I'll, we've received public letters on this, um, I'll, I'll address that in the, when we get to the public hearing portion. Uh, but go ahead.
I was gonna address that as well. So, perfect. Um, so there's a couple of things I want to address off the bat. Uh, updates from the staff report. Found some typos, got, got to a little, a little too late. Um, so there's a couple instances like here where it says sixteen point five. Um, that's the main parcel. There's additional small sliver parcel. Uh, so the total acreage is sixteen point nine. Uh, you'll see that through the body of the staff reports. Uh, but I failed to catch it in the, the notice language. Uh, in addition to that, uh, your staff report for item three had the same staff recommendation it did for item number two. Hopefully you received the updated staff report for that, uh, earlier today. Um, my second part was to that public comment. Uh, you received, you should have received two emails, uh, prior to the hearing, uh, one from D N Torsak and one from Chantel Bjorn. Uh, with stating concerns, um, on this proposal, uh, specifically with the rezone and what it would bring. Um, if you read through those, hopefully I addressed those through my presentation. If I don't, please, please come back to them. Uh, we received a third from Jesse and Jesse Ryan McAdam. Uh, during study session, uh, so we didn't get a chance to get that to you. So for the record, if you allow me to read it.
Uh, can we, can we, can I have you read it in when I open it up to public hearing?
Yeah.
And then we'll, we'll take comments, uh, additional public comments at that time.
Yeah, sounds great.
Just, uh, remind me, um, and if, if, if there's anyone in the, in the audience has a question, it, can you go to a, a staff member and, and bring it up? Okay, we'll, we'll get to, to that at the, okay. Uh, go ahead.
Okay. Um, so, uh, here we have the property, uh, between nine sixty north, uh, just adjacent to Geneva Road, uh, highlighted there. I took a few photos of the property to show you kind of current, uh, conditions. Uh, the two pictures on the top are taken from twenty-four eighty west right here. And the two pictures on the bottom are taken over at the connection on ten sixty north. Uh, so this property currently is zone R one eight. Uh, the reason they're asking for a P D zone is to be a little bit more creative with the subdivision. Uh, so the, the R one eight, they could, they could come in, they could build single family, detach eight thousand square foot lots, as is right now, um, without coming to any kind of public hearing. Uh, what they wanted to do is to push all of those units to the east part of the property. There's a couple of reasons for that. One is you see the natural open area. Uh, most of that is, uh, considered wetland currently. And then if you go back to the overhead, it's hard to see in these photos, uh, but the picture on the bottom right, uh, pretty significant transmission power lines. So with those two things on the property, uh, Steph uh, saw it the same way, or it made sense to, to use a tool to to get this roughly the same amount of units, but pushed congregated over to the eastern part of the property where you wouldn't affect the wetlands, you wouldn't affect uh, people living under power lines and, and things like that. But at the same time, you're providing open areas uh, which will be maintained by H O A. Uh, so a lot of it's going to be kept natural, of course, uh, but you see additional open areas kind of be in the middle of the project uh, that H O A would be, uh, in responsible for maintaining. Um, so, so the P D use is really just that. It's, it's an opportunity to, to shift the units to be creative with uh, the, the setbacks and the unit type and, but still provide roughly the same amount of single family residential units. Uh, into the staff report, you'll see that Steph believes that this hits on a lot of goals from the general plan. Um, promoting different types of homes, sizes, price points of homes, uh, encouraging, uh, protection of environmentally or, or geological sensitive areas. And, uh, in addition to that, uh, striving to increase the, the housing availability for the city, which isn't just a Provo problem, it's a Utah problem, it's a nation problem. Uh, enough housing for the demand, uh, and that's, that's what everybody's facing and, and we believe that this proposal, uh, meets a lot of those goals in a, in a smart way. And we are supporting the proposals for rezone and the, the attached concept plan. Um, also noted in the, in the staff report is the developer has proffered a development agreement to guarantee some of these things, uh, a variety of types of housing, a variety of, uh, floor plans, looks, materials, elevations. Um, um, the H O A maintenance, things like that are, are going to be guaranteed, uh, by the developer. So we feel pretty good about that. Uh, but that's all I have for, for these two items, unless you had any initial questions for me.
Let's go ahead with questions, commissioners. Mr. Jensen, I, I know you, you have some.
Got me. Um, I was asking, I got some things for discussion that I've answered myself, but for Mr. Ardmore, um, isn't there kind of a risk in relying on the H O A with C C Rs? In case that goes defunct for these things that we really care about?
So, yes, and, um, not only relying on C C N Rs was on our minds. Uh, so that's why we, we asked the applicant if they'd be willing to guarantee that in another way. Um, so that, that line is also in the development, the draft development agreement that would be going to council.
So even if the H O A falls apart, the development agreement that they're proffering would, would require it. Okay. Um, the other question I had in your findings of fact, the five things that you listed there, how do those compare with the general plan and the West Side goals? Are all of these, um, things in this proposal compatible with the goals of the West Side plan and the, or the Southwest plan, I guess it is?
Yes, um, the, other than the fact that it is over the three units per gross acre.
But that was with the density bonus, right?
With the P D. So that's the P D tool that the council has given us to allow this kind of creativity. And, uh, there's room for that on the West Side of the city.
Okay. I just wanted to mention right now, um, that if I'm doing the math right, sixteen point nine acres in an R one eight zone would typically allow for ninety-two lots. Um, if they're eight thousand square foot lots, so not with the density requirements on the West Side, but that, am I right about eight thousand square foot lots?
Yes, but once you take out the roads, a standard subdivision would probably produce about sixty-two.
Okay, I just wanted to just, that was phenomenal to me because I was afraid we were pushing the limits on what it would allow and making it really packed in there.
Right.
But it really is less than what it would.
Yeah, that's a great note.
Okay, thank you for verifying that. Um, yeah, mostly I just had questions about the C C N Rs. My, um, my last question. Okay, I have two more. Have other subdivisions under those huge power lines there used similar clustering strategies or is this the first one to try this?
Um.
Cause I've always thought, why would anyone want to live under those? So I'm excited that someone is trying something creative to make it more desirable and save the wetlands at the same time.
I don't know about under these specific power lines. I know there's a P D, uh, up to the, the northwest there. You can see the, the townhome products there. That was done with a P D. Uh, that doesn't address the, the power line question you had. I'd have to kind of look through the map, north and south to see if anybody's used that. I can't think that there has been, but.
Okay. Broadview Shores.
Broadview Shores has done that.
Okay. Um, and then along with the wetlands, is the distance that these lots are shown here from the wetlands sufficient to lower the flood risk? Isn't there still like a huge groundwater saturation thing in proximity to the wetlands?
These aren't, these aren't in a, any kind of floodplain area, so there's not a concern there.
It's just an existing wet area. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, uh, just to clarify, that, that whole southwest portion that says natural open area, that, there's no future development there.
There's no future development there and, and this would guarantee that.
And then, uh, who's the, are the, are, is the property to the north? Is, is that affiliated with um, the property owners for this?
It isn't. Um, there was a lot of effort, um, by the applicant and also asked for by staff to, to coordinate with that, that property owner, uh, that was turned down.
Aaron, just out of curiosity, um, the southwest plan technically is from the river south. So what plan covers?
No, the southwest plan is actually everything. The, the name is tricky. Uh, it's everything west of I fifteen.
Okay, when we made it, it was only river south.
Yeah, that's the land use plan that was initially adopted before the neighborhood plan was just south of the river. But that, that southwest neighborhoods plan covers everything west of I fifteen. Good question.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not seeing any other questions by commissioners. Uh, we'll go ahead and, uh, have the applicant come forward. Uh, yeah. Yeah, please state your name.
Good evening. My name is Garrett Seeley, representing the application, uh, of Karen and Larry Waite property.
Go ahead.
You know, I'm going to tell you that staff did a wonderful job explaining everything that we're doing. And the reason why we chose to just, uh, do the overlay zone and not rezone the entire property was to be creative, as he said, in dealing with the natural issues that we're dealing with, the power lines, the uh, wetland issues and clustering those while not trying to shove as many homes as possible. Even though we could have, but we didn't feel like that was the best thing to do for this property and the existing neighborhood. So that's the reason why we ended where we did. Other than that, I think staff did a wonderful job of explaining everything. Do you have any questions for me?
Yeah, we, we've all, we've all read the staff report, uh. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant? Go ahead.
Uh, yeah, so I'm curious what maintenance in a natural open area looks like. Does that mean you're just gonna leave it as is? Will there be any sort of mosquito abatement since it is a wetland? You know, what will it entail?
You know, most HO As or public is not really equipped to do any mosquito abatement. Uh, you know, we, we'll have to rely on the county for that and those taxes that are collected for that purpose. Um, what happens in this area and what we have found out that this well and has been created because of a ditch, an irrigation ditch that has not really been taken care of or cleaned out. So, a, a lot of that maintenance will fall upon the lake bottom canal company to make sure that those water flows keep continuing to flow through there. Um, but around the roads and areas like that for clear view and different things, then there will be mowings and different things to kind of keep those weeds down and abated, but leave the rest of it natural.
Is there any natural occurring springs that are in that wetlands area?
Uh, not in that wellens area, but right in the center where there's the open area, there is a spring there that if I remember Karen, you said that this is the first year. Oh, sorry. This is the first year that it actually produced.
Well.
Years ago.
Is, is this, I'm just to clarify, I, uh, we don't want to have cross talk, but i- is she part of the, is this?
This is Karen Waite. She's, she's the property owner.
Karen, why don't you come up and just state your name and, and what, uh, so we get your, your comment on the record.
Hi, I'm Karen Waite. And, uh, as, as far as the spring goes, there is a spring there. When we bought the place, we lived there since nineteen seventy-five. And at that time, the spring was active. It was active for some years and then it dried up. And, um, this last year, I think it's been the first year that it's been running again. And it's last time I was out there, it was dry again. It's, it's been kind of intermittent now since this big, since this big uh, storms that we've had recently, but for the most part, it has been dry.
And Commissioner, it sits in the middle of the property.
Cause a lot of the wells in that part of town have also gone dry. Except they would have been more active this year because of the wet.
We agree. So with final engineering, we will address those issues and take care of it.
Questions for you? Go ahead.
Um, I maybe should have asked Mr. Ardmore, but there's a road that, um, it's said in the staff report somewhere that, that it's a possibility to connect with Geneva Road. Um, who protects that right of way and, and what would warrant it being connected to Geneva Road? I don't know if you know that or if that's Mr. Ardmore.
I could probably answer that for you if you like. Uh, it's the, it's the road on the east side of this property. Uh, as you can see where it goes to the north, kind of tapers down to a half width.
Through that lot seventeen?
And then it bends, you can see that curve on lot seventeen as it goes to the east there. So what we have done is literally you can connect anywhere along that road. We've left you almost a thousand feet of connection space going to the north, or I mean to the east. However, we believe the best place for it will be following that road contour going to the east.
Is that something that was requested by, uh, Public Works?
It was to follow their road master plan. We don't own the property to the east, but we'll stub it so it's there ready to go.
So what determines it's time to connect? Like, is it a for sure thing or is it, once the development's done? Mr. Ardmore maybe knows more than.
So, so this applicant has done what he can do. Uh, it's going to depend on the property owner to the north. Uh, that sliver that it connect up to Geneva Road is connected to that large parcel to the north. Um, so whenever that develops, the city would see to it.
Okay, the reason I'm asking is because I feel like it would, um, it would address some of the concerns that people are expressing about traffic going through the neighborhood if there was another access there. So I was happy to see that it was an option. And just wondering what a timeline would look like. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right. Thank you, Mr. Seeley.
Thank you.
Uh, we'll go ahead and, are there any district or neighborhood representatives here to comment? Okay, uh, let's proceed. I'm not seeing any district or neighborhood representatives. Let's go ahead and we're gonna read the letter, uh, that was provided to us just like around four o'clock or so while we're in, uh, the study session. And then after that, I will, we'll open this for public comment. Go ahead, uh, Mr. Ardmore.
Thank you. Okay, the letter reads, honorable members of the planning commission, I'm, I am a concerned resident of our community and wish to voice my apprehensions about the proposed fifty-six unit twin home subdivision. I understand the need for development growth. I see it all over Provo and Orme. New townhomes, condos and twin homes seem to stretch as far as the eye can see. I assume these numbers suggest a healthy, productive city for those looking from the outside in. But it's imperative that we consider the broader implications of, for our neighborhood. I know we on the lakeside of Provo are a small, small portion of the greater city. But here are some specific concerns I'd like to address. Increased traffic and our elementary school. Introducing fifty-six new units translates to a significant increase in vehicular traffic. Our elementary school is located within the vicinity and added traffic raises safety concerns for our children walking to and from school. Additionally, the increased vehicular movement through the neighborhood can affect the peace and tranquility we currently enjoy. Looking at the proposed development area, I see no direct access from this new subdivision to Geneva Road, which means there are only two roads to which all traffic will have to travel. One of these roads is near my home, to which I recently moved with my wife and children to get away from the noise and traffic generated by the new construction of the Provo High School. That road is now constantly inundated, inundated by teens with souped up loud vehicles racing up and down the streets, along with individuals who see the new construction as an opportunity to test their A T Vs and other off-road vehicles. More tightly packed homes mean more opportunities for inconsiderate people to annoy an already established community. Access to amenities. Our neighborhood is uniquely positioned in a manner that doesn't grant easy access to essential amenities like grocery stores, family restaurants and other recreations. Especially compared to areas on the other side of the freeway. Adding more residents without addressing these disparities will only amplify the convenient inconvenience. Adding more residents without addressing these disparities will only amplify the convenient inconveniences and potential dissatisfaction among community members. Impact on property value. Historically, property values can be influenced by the type and density of surrounding homes. With the introduction of fifty-six twin homes, there's a legitimate concern about the potential. Impact on the value of surrounding single family homes. We need to understand the long term implications of this development on our investments. In conclusion, while we recognize the importance of community growth and development, it's equally crucial to ensure that this growth is sustainable and beneficial. To all existing and future residents. I urge the planning commission to consider these concerns seriously and evaluate the potential long term implications. Of the proposed subdivision on our community's quality of life. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Jesse Ryan McAdam.
Can you repeat that name just real quick? Jesse?
Jesse Ryan McAdam.
Okay. I'll go ahead. As I mentioned, we'll we'll open up this. Portion of the meeting of public comment. Please come forward. We we want to keep a steady stream of people. Your comments limited to two minutes. There'll be a timer. When the timer goes off, it's gonna. Your microphone will go dead. Uh, so please come up, state your name.
I'm Joel Williams. I live on nine sixty north, so my backyard would look into the development there. Um, it's been a good seventeen years that we've lived there with that open space. We've loved it and we've had a good neighbor there taking care of our horses and. It's and we understand that it's private property and and can be sold. Um, in the time that we've been there, it's. I've counted fifty different species of birds that have. Inhabited that area and it's just been this great open space, so I am really glad to see that there's still planned to be some natural open area. I will say, though, that spring is where a lot of that. Uh, activity was concentrated with with the birds, like creek blue herons and sandhill cranes and bald eagle and tern and. Pheasants and it it's been really cool. We even had deer back there, but the um. I as I'm also a civil engineer by profession and I would say I do have concerns about the groundwater in this area. Our home is is built a slab on grade. And so thankfully, we don't have a a crawl space to get to get flooded on a year like this, but. I would worry about. An engineering solution for that. Oftentimes it involves trying to make it go somewhere else, but water always finds a way and I would have concern about. Water getting into into those homes. Um, and and they're being flooding because that that is a natural wetland. I also would express some concerns about vehicular traffic, um. You know, I've got kids that that live and play on on these streets and um. That would be a lot of additional traffic having some fifty-six units in the neighborhood, but. Again, it's it's a. Private property and we understand that it can be sold, but uh anyway, those are my comments and appreciate your time.
Thank you. Let's keep it coming. Uh, we do have a full agenda tonight. Go ahead, uh, Miss Wait.
Yes, if no one else is going to speak, uh, I am Karen Wait and I own the property. And I would like to say something. In nineteen seventy-five. When we bought this property, Geneva Road was a quiet country road, quiet country road. I would look out to the west from my from my property. And guess what I could see? Water skiers on Utah Lake. Okay. Since then, hundreds, probably like thousands of homes have been built. Uh, a lot of those homes been, you know. Built and are lived lived in by people who now are objecting to this latest development. But guess what? Those houses you live in are the ones that I really didn't want. I didn't want to have. Ruin my road. They did. I didn't want to have ruined my view. But I never protested and I didn't protest because. We know, my husband and I know, that people need places to live. They like to live in Provo and guess what? You can't necessarily afford to live up in Sherwood Hills or the river bottoms, you know? And the west is probably the only place left in Utah and Provo at least. Where you can have homes that don't cost a jillion dollars. My husband lost both of his legs in Vietnam. Uh, he spent two and a half years, not months, two and a half years. In Army Hospital. He has worked his whole life keeping that place going. He has built the barns. He's had no money for, you know, we bought a tractor actually after twenty years living there. He hand dug all the ditches. So they could light uh have watered to our horses out in the back. He's put his life and soul in it. He's eighty-one years. And he cannot continue keeping that. And if you guys have looked at the place just to the north of us, Matt Baker's place. With. Canadian thistles eight, ten feet tall. That's what this place will look like.
I I'm gonna. I'm gonna increase the public comment portion to three minutes. Is that is that all right? Does there is there any? Commissioners that are? Um, I I'm gonna give you thirty more seconds, all right, but um, uh, commissioners, is there any disagreement if we allow three minutes? Okay.
Okay, anyway, we we cannot afford the taxes anymore either, but mostly. I mine concern is that. The place to the north of us is just god awful. And hey, if we can't maintain it. That place is gonna be god awful and you're not gonna want it in your neighborhood. You're gonna much prefer to have a decent development. Um, and that's that's pretty much all I have to say, you know? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wait. Uh, state your name.
Okay.
Three, we're doing uh three minutes, just. Go go ahead.
My name is Tiffany Williams. I live just on twenty-seven hundred right there. The wetlands are behind my home. Um, we've always, we've lived there about fifteen years and we've loved having the wetlands behind our house. They look beautiful. We love having a view to the Y Mountain. Um, so I actually really love this um concept of. Being able to fit homes into that smaller space and preserving the wetland area. Um. I also, when I heard that it was for sale and that there was gonna be um more dense um housing possibly, I was envisioning condos, apartments and. I wasn't happy about that. I think this is a really happy medium. Um, where you're able to get. Family homes that are a little more dense, but um. But not like. Ugly. Um. And then I do, I do kind of understand the concerns about traffic. Um, I I wonder, I have no idea if this is impossible, but like making a deal with the owner to be able to build it or. Continue a road to Geneva. Um, I think that would help with flow within the neighborhoods. Um. And then another. Um, concern someone brought up was. Um. Accessibility to um like grocery stores and things. Um, I think we just need to build a grocery store in the west side, so I know that that's been in the talks for a long time and I don't know what's the status is, but um. Yeah, so those, those are my. Comments, and I think that's it. Thank you.
I am Jesse Ryan McAdam. That last letter that was written was by me. Uh, I don't have a ton to add to that, except I guess a few points in terms of. Having lived in Provo for the last fifteen years, I feel like every concern she made is valid. It's her land. She gets to choose how she wants to use it. And people need places to live. Um, at the same time. Filling every nook and cranny in this city with houses. There's a big difference, you know? This, I I understand how stupid this sounds. There's a big difference watching a sunrise over a field and trees than suburban homes. Um. I don't have any solutions to the problem, but. I guess I just wanted to make. That part known. I get people need places to live, but. This housing thing, like how full does this glass need to be before we start spilling over and we get problems because we have too many people in every nook and cranny of the city? And not enough spaces to. I guess enjoy is the word I'm looking for. I suppose it would have been nice. I. I'm not very savvy in terms of real estate and purchasing, but when this sale went up, it would have been nice if the neighborhood. And maybe it happened. I don't know. Like I said, I'm kind of ignorant on this. It would have been nice if the neighbors had the opportunity to go, oh, yeah, I'd like to. Help preserve a space by purchasing a portion of it, expanding my property, keeping the place open. While still allow, still allowing, you know, the private sale of the property. And obviously, that is not something that can happen now, but. My property is that little triangle at the very top of the next field that's gonna be developed. And I would like to have that opportunity. I don't know how that would be presenting itself, but. An option like that when this parcel of land like this that all the surrounding neighborhood and, you know. I don't know of anyone who gets out of their house in the morning and doesn't love having that open space to enjoy, even though it's not theirs. But having an option for the community to help preserve it. In a more, I guess, accessible way would have been a nice option.
Uh, Jesse, would you mind? I think there's a laser pointer down there. Would you mind uh just pointing up on the screen behind us which that property is yours?
Right, okay. My property borders Matt Baker's property, and if that ever sells, then we're gonna be surrounded by the suburbs and night. I get that that's. Like I get people need a place to live. But. For the three months we've been there, we've really enjoyed having. This little piece of solitude that's not rigor with all of these other people's. Automobiles and. Loudness and lives, but. I get that. It's gonna change.
Thank you. Appreciate that. There's anyone else? Please come forward, take a seat in the front. Go ahead, sir.
I'm John Senior. Um, I agree with uh. If that area there is kept. I I hope the city buys that area so nobody could move in there. If you're gonna develop the other area. Actually, I don't want any development. I like that white field out there, but if you're gonna. Put houses there, then have the city buy that so nobody could buy it and uh. Because it is beautiful just to look out there across that field is very beautiful and uh. You're gonna wreck my view. Okay, thanks a lot.
Thank you, sir. Uh, you have another comment?
Andy Flymon, co-applicant. If I address the traffic concern, just one thing that wasn't highlighted in the.
Yeah, and I I I want you to address this question I'm because I'm gonna ask it to. Uh, I wanna know, uh. Are these, do you plan for these units to be owned or or rented? Uh, go ahead and bring up your things.
Yep.
Um, let me go ahead and address my question first and then we'll we'll start his timer.
Okay.
All right.
Um, I I'm sure on if they're gonna be owner occupied. That's uh, I'm I'm not a builder. Um, we're we're going to be developing these and selling them to a builder. We'll sell them to individuals whether or not they rent them. I mean, that's so far. Uh, away removed from me that I I don't have any. Um, say in that.
Okay.
Um, so Geneva Road is a uh UDOT road and UDOT has very strict. Uh, guidelines on how close intersections can be from one another. And the gentleman to the north, if you can see right here where I'm pointing with the laser. Already has access to Geneva. That's our our initial design had a stub road, I believe it was in this area. But but staff knowing the limitations of UDOT had us push it up because they didn't, they can't have two. Streets that close together on Geneva, UDOT requirement, so that. Unfortunately, in the short term, this is the best scenario we could have come up with. And we worked with staff modifying it to make it as best we could we can, but tell this gentleman to the north. Develops this property and and adds that access to Geneva Road. That's this kind of all we were able to do. Any questions on that?
No, no, thank you. Appreciate it. Any other public comment? Yeah, I'm not seeing anyone come up, so uh. We'll go ahead and close the public port, public comment portion of the hearing. Public hearing portion. Uh, and we'll discuss. As commissioners amongst ourselves. Um. I I'm, if you don't mind, I'm just gonna go first, uh. One concern, one, I'll I'll bring up some things I really like. I do like that they're uh accommodating future connectivity. Um, and and building that into the. The the plot, the the plan to eventually connect to Geneva Geneva Road when that. Um, should the property to the north develop, I am really fond of the. Open area smack in the middle of. Those twin homes. Uh, it will give people to. Not just that center chunk, but uh the homes across the street and the homes across. Uh, to the to the south and homes to the north, so I really like. That planned open area. Uh. I do like the, I mean, just visually looking at it, it looks like half the. Half the parcel is undeveloped. Which is. Uh, gosh, that's that's pretty neat that that. You can keep that much open space. Of course, I mean, they're. They they have to work with what they have with the power lines. Uh, and the wetlands. Uh. But it looks like it's preserving as a serious portion of that. And from what staff has reported that there there are no. Uh, future anticipated plans to develop that area to the south. Um, I do have concerns with uh. The lack of, it doesn't seem to be any plans for homeownership. Uh, while there is need for rentals as well, uh, Provo. Uh, not one of the number one things we hear in every single. Development application is, are these renting or owning? And uh, as planning commission members, we don't. We don't, um. Can't really force you guys. Uh. But it's so it's a concern when there's not a plan for homeownership. Um, it's something I recommend that. You do. Uh, I think the demand. Is there? Uh, the prices. Will support ownership, uh, whether. I imagine most of these twin homes will. Go for more than the homes surrounding them when when they were purchased. Uh. That's just the way this hot market is. Um, and and uh. Uh, other people have met. Like the BYU students mentioned, the northeast neighborhood plan, uh, you know, you had a lot of. Families that had. Want to stay in the area but wanted to downsize. This is something that meets that need. Uh. So, yeah, I would just, I would highly, I do have concerns with. Homeownership versus rental, but. Go ahead. Any any other commissioners want to make any comments? Just jump in and hold the microphone.
I I was one concerned about the homeownership issue and I think that I agree about the. Um, folks downsizing. I think that's something that's overlooked. When we think about density, sometimes we. Worry about what kind of people are gonna live there and honestly, I'm sad when. Folks in my neighborhood. The grandparents in my neighborhood, they have to leave the neighborhood because there's nothing in our neighborhood, even in their ward or whatever to move to. Um, and I also think this is. As lamentable as it may be that this is agriculture land turning developed, I think this is honestly like the best you're gonna get in terms of open amounts of land. Um, and I think the plan is very generous that way and very good. Um, yeah, and that they have a variety of floor plans is also really help positive.
Could someone come up with the? Show me where the power line runs.
Yeah, laser pointer and then we'll. So it does not go over the top of any of the homes.
Yeah.
Okay, just to note, he's it it generally follows the path.
She was pointing it on.
Of a harbor.
If you look at your plat in the packet, it shows it in there.
Harbor Parkway. There.
Oh. We don't have that.
Yeah.
It's not in the.
Any other commissioners? Go ahead.
So a couple of things I wanted to comment on. First, I also like. Um, this kind of unique way of preserving some open space and. Finding a way to work around some of the issues in the area.
And finding a way to work around some of the issues in the area. I really like that. Um, I also like that they're adding density and perhaps an alternate housing type. That from the outside at least will very much look like single family homes, right? Uh, they just happen to have two front doors is the only difference there, and I think that's a real positive. Um, some concerns that I have here. Um. That, that were shared with us, actually, I should say, not my concerns, but concerns that were shared with us that I'd like to address. One is. The increased traffic, and I think, you know, increased traffic is always a concern wherever you are. Uh, we wanna have our kids able to play outside, et cetera, without it. However, I think it's important for us to remember in this case. It was already zoned one point eight. And so the traffic was going to be there regardless. The number of units isn't going up, so it's not creating a particularly onerous. Uh, burden on the area. I like that there's two exits from the neighborhood. I would really love to see the direct one to Geneva. Um, up there. I hadn't noticed that in the report and one of my first thoughts when I saw it was, wow, if we could just connect to Geneva, that would solve all the traffic issues. So it's good to see that that's in there. Um, we, in a letter we received. Um, and I believe mentioned here as well, uh, there were questions about the impact on the elementary school. That's a question for the school district, not for us. Um, but I do happen to know that there are other schools in the area that can adjust boundaries, et cetera. That's, I think, gonna be fine. Um, and amenities, honestly, to get to increase our likelihood of a grocery store on the west side. Uh, from discussions I've had with the mayor's office, et cetera, when I was a neighborhood chair out there. The grocery stores keep saying they need more rooftops, and so this might actually help rather than hinder that. Um, some concerns, and I don't know if this is addressed at this point or at another point, but the groundwater question, I think, is a very salient question. If you have a spring that at least sometimes is active here, you have wet, uh, land areas. Um, perhaps it needs to be slab on grade, something like that to prevent kind of flooding issues. I know there's not gonna be basements because there isn't any out there. Um, but is that at this stage? Does anyone know? Or is that something that would be addressed during the engineering stages later on? Eric?
Yeah, so that would be addressed at final subdivision and again at building permits.
Okay, excellent. Um, and then I do also share the concern that several have raised already about rentals versus, um. Ownership opportunities. I think we need all the ownership opportunities that we can get in this city. Uh, especially with honestly, this price point and this housing type. I think it's an excellent area that is. Kind of a lacking housing type as far as ownership opportunities.
Uh, we're, we're, I'm sorry, I can't let you speak. We're, we're, uh. We're just limiting it to commissioner discussion. I, I'd invite you to make your comments to, um, Mr. Pepperoni's coming in. Go ahead, commissioners.
So, um. I am so excited about this because this is exactly, I feel like what's the discussion has been since they started rewriting the general plan. Um, lots of talk about the West Side plan in the last several years and, and what its goals and objectives are, and how do we. Preserve the residential feel and the agricultural feel, and I feel like this is such a great compromise of. Of finding a mix of housing types and, and still honoring the density limitations. Um, I feel like this is exactly what we've been hoping to see. Um, I love that the delta, that the developers. Um, proffered agreement covers the uncertainty of the HOA and the CCNRs. Um, some people mentioned in their comments that they hope that that doesn't get developed, but my understanding from Mr. Ardmore's presentation is that. That agreement would make it so it couldn't, so somebody can't sneak in at the end and increase the density. So what you see is what you get if this, if this went through as promised. Um, I like the road layout. I know that there, right now, there's only two, the two access points, but there's the one also on twenty six seventy west. That would stub into whatever gets developed to the north. Um, I like that it's not a straight shot through. Um. I know, I, I live in an area that's been under construction for much of the twenty eight years that I've lived there, and. When things are being built, there are, there's dirt and gravel around and there's noise and it vibrates your house. Um, but then it's done and you have your quiet serene neighborhood back again, so it's annoying for a time, but. I don't, you know, it'll, it'll slow down. Um, my only big concern, I feel like there's nothing I can do about the rental versus homeownership. It's a. It's a, a goal I share, but I don't think there's anything we can do today. I, um, I'm concerned about the groundwater, and if it's, um, mostly in that open area. What I would love to see is a little bit more of a buffer in that open area. If that's the wettest spot, the part with the spring in it. Um. I don't know. I'm not gonna say get rid of two lots, but that would accomplish what I'm envisioning here if, if you could make that open area a little bit bigger. Just to give more buffer, but I'm not gonna. Request it. I'm just suggesting.
Similarly, I think, uh, the developments does a lot of the great things that we're hoping for. These types of areas, uh, the, the rental situation, I don't. I, I don't know that a rental community is the kind of product that we need for this area. Looking at the names on the sheets here. I mean, there, and, and clearly we don't know who that's going to be, but it's a high likelihood that this is gonna be a rental community. And that's the thing that gives me the most pause, like, uh, love the product, love the area, love the layout. Preservation of open space, uh, would be curious to know what. City engineering thinks about the groundwater, uh, just at risk, you know, for, for longer, but. Having another for rent. Product here, I don't know if this is helping us.
I also was noticing in, some of the comments we received said that these, um, backed right onto their property. And I think it's interesting to note that there's really only. Six homes that back onto the subdivision where the houses will actually be. And all the rest of them back onto the open space or to the undeveloped land to the north. And the thing I like about that is that. Um. These would already be in existence before all those backyards to the north would, would have something on them, so. It feels like less of a surprise to more people. So that's just felt like worth noting.
I wanted to say again, I think this is really positive in terms of. Preservation of the open space because forty five percent is an awful lot, um, if you can imagine. If, if this were the model for, if we could achieve this kind of. Preservation of open lands in the west side, forty five percent, I mean, that's aspirational, I feel like, so. I think that should be noted. And I also think it should be noted that, um. The way the city is, uh. The org chart is, um, that I think it's important for people to understand that. The streets and engineering are like another department from development services. And there's cooperation, right? Is it my right, um, Mr. Pepperoni? And so, uh, we don't have like the ability to force anything in that area. That's gonna be a conversation the neighborhoods need to have. Um, with engineering, with the city and all that, so that's not something we can. Like check off, like changing the way the streets are and all of that. That's a separate department.
Any other comment by commissioners? Is anyone prepared to bring?
Well, I just.
One more comment, or not one more.
Not a comment, but a discussion on the motion, I guess. Um, that, that we could put together here. In our training we recently received, they kind of suggested that we take votes on concerns. To show how widely a concern is held. Should we make a motion to, to note the concern about rentals versus purchasing opportunities? Uh, in this area.
Yes, I, I do wanna, um, whatever motion that, that goes forward. That we identify, you know, A, B, C, D.
I think he's, he's saying that we would say. On a separate motion before we make a motion to approve or deny that we would on a separate motion say. For the record, this is something that the majority of us are concerned with.
Understood, uh, wh- how about we? Well, we just do take each concern and, and then we'll have a, a show of hands. And I'll repeat the number of the vote. Uh, on, on what, what the consensus is among the planning commission for. The, the concern, alright? Um, so let's just bring the concerns one by one. Um. Then we'll all start with concerns. We'll, let's start with traffic.
How do you address that though? Like, what's a measurable vote on that? Of course, we're concerned about traffic, but. Is there anything we can, I don't feel like that's something we can do anything.
Well, let's flush it out.
Yeah.
Those who have concerns about it would like to further articulate that.
No. I just think this is a citywide problem. It happens in my neighborhood and every neighborhood of everybody I talk to, so that's something that. It is beyond our scope, I think.
Well, and for me, this was already zoned R one point eight. They're not adding additional units. It's not an additional traffic load than what was already.
They're not asking, they're also not asking for a change to the traffic plan or anything. It's exactly what the city has planned, so I'm okay with it.
And there's a place for additional connection to Geneva if and when that time comes. And to the north.
Okay, so I'm, I'm hearing there's not a concern with traffic. Specifically because densities, the units on the, on the possible is actually less than what. Units there is actually proposed is less than what could be built, so, uh, not. Not bringing up concerns on traffics, uh, next concern.
Groundwater and ownership are the two big ones I heard. I don't know how, do you want one of us to try and articulate?
I share a concern about that. I'm, I'm looking at. Uh. Utah Geological Survey and their, their wetlands map. Um. Showing some portions. It comes with that, so, so groundwater, wetlands, um.
For two reasons. First, for stability of the properties, but secondly. If the only open area for the neighborhood that we're so excited about is in fact a spring, it will be essentially ineffective as an open area. So. To me, that I would like to make sure that that gets addressed, so. Um, maybe I would propose the question, raise the question, how many commissioners are so, um, concerned enough? With the groundwater, specifically that spring in the open area that you would hesitate to approve it. Because of, unless something was done differently. Is that a good way of stating a concern that's votable?
I think, if I remember right, from what we discussed, the way to do it is say. You know, I motion that our recommendation to the city council note the concern.
Okay.
That groundwater, especially with the spring in the middle of the neighborhood, must be addressed.
I like that, exactly how he said it.
Okay, uh, let's raise the hands who.
If you share that concern.
Share that concern that Commissioner Hill just voiced. Uh, that's unanimous, okay? Um. Uh, other concerns?
And then the next one, I motion that our report, our recommendation to the city council note the concern about. A, a lack of a plan for rentals versus ownership opportunities on the project.
How many other commissioners share that concern by raising hands? It's unanimous, uh, six, zero. Uh, any other concerns we wanna bring up?
Maybe on that one, just what is the, what are our courses of action? That are available to us, right? Because if that's significant enough, no, I don't know. For us, I believe what the recommendation is, is that we recommend denial unless these issues are addressed. And that gives, because we're just recommending to the city council, right? And so.
We're actually, we can approve the subdivision.
Okay.
Uh.
Of the other item.
Yeah, this, this is an item that we. We can say yes or no on, uh, based on that. Uh, we could also recommend that. Uh, they discuss it further, further options with development services. Uh, to, to increase honor, homeownership, maybe a dedicated percentage or a, uh, something of affordability. Uh, Mr. Ardmore, do you? Um, do you have any comments on that?
Um, I think it's, uh, probably the best practice to, to note the concern as, as Commissioner Hill was saying. Uh, forward that to the city council. Um, I anticipated that already being a point of discussion at the city council. I think your, uh, vote of concern. Uh, will amplify that discussion at that hearing. Um, and. If they don't feel that that's resolved to their satisfaction, uh, they would have the choice to continue it, deny it, and so forth.
Meanwhile, since we have the power to approve the subdivision while waiting for that, um. Zone map amendment, do we hold off on voting on that since we have concerns about zoning? How do we?
I suppose you could, um. Really, this, this subdivision is, is being used as a concept plan, right? Um, and it's being tied to the development agreement. Um, so I, I think if the, the layout of this subdivision is okay with the planning commission. Um, I think the owner occupancy is a separation tied to the rezone.
Okay.
The groundwater may have something to do with the layout though, right?
Yeah, that one's more tied to the layout. But I see reinforcements creeping up behind you.
Uh, Director Pepperoni?
So just to help you understand our process a little bit, um. If this is rezoned by the city council, and I've expressed to the developers that the city council will probably have the exact same concern over owner occupancy. If the zoning is approved by the city council and this moves forward, they still have to go through plat approval from engineering and planning. One of the things we'll look at is soils, conditions, and wat- water level. And I, I've seen projects just like this with natural artesian wells on springs on the property. Be successfully developed by requiring that French drains be built around every house or doing other similar engineering mitigation measures that. Are completely feasible and doable. So that will be part of staff review as this moves forward if it gets the zone changed. Anytime you can voice your concerns to the city council and send that, can send that signal, that's very helpful to them. They look for that, so. What you've been discussing is great.
But we don't necessarily need to hold it back because the structure in place will take care of our concerns in that one.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other concerns we wanna bring up? Um, particularly the, on item three with it, that moves forward to. To city council.
I'm super comfortable with so much of this that I would be comfortable making a motion if you are ready to take one.
Um, yeah, let's hear it.
Okay, I would move that we approve. Item number two, Garrett Sealy requests preliminary subdivision approval for a fifty six unit twin home development. I think I would, I would change that to say for a fifty eight unit home development because there's the two extra parcels, but. I'll read it in as it is. Approval for a fifty six unit twin home development on sixteen point nine acres. In a proposed R one eight P D, one family residential performance, performance development zone located approximately. At ten sixty nine North Geneva Road in the Lakeview North neighborhood.
Is there a discussion on the motion? Uh. And then, uh, is there a second on the motion?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, let's have a, a vote on that. We'll start with Commissioner De Soto.
I am.
I. I vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, uh. Item number two is approved. Uh. Six, zero. Item number three. Does anyone wanna bring forth a motion on that? And please note, uh.
That we're recommending.
Subject to, oh, if there is a recommendation for approval to city council, it's subject to approval of the development agreement. And. Uh, we'll note. Uh. The concerns of wetlands and ownership, uh. Which was voted unanimously on each of those. Anyway.
I'm happy to make a motion on that one, too.
Go ahead.
Um, I move that we recommend. Or that we forward a positive recommendation to the municipal council for item three. Garrett Sealy requests a zone map amendment for a P D performance development overlay zone to be applied to sixteen point nine acres of land. In the R one eight, one family residential zone, in order to create a fifty six unit twin home development located approximately at ten sixty nine. North Geneva Road in the Lakeview North neighborhood, um, with the items of concern forwarded as well. And subject to the development agreement. Being approved.
Is there a, any discussion on the motion?
Maybe discussion on the motion.
Go ahead.
For a minute, just, uh, if we want to send.
For a minute, just uh if we want to send the communicate to the city council our concerns, which is the better way to to forward this? Recommend denial unless it's been addressed or recommend approval subject to the fact that they look at it. I mean, is there a qualitative approach there that's better than the other? Either way, it lands on their desk, so.
Either way, it lands on their desk, and I think the idea is there is support for this, and I think that is illustrated by recommendation, positive recommendation with concerns noted. I I think that better portrays the discussion and the thoughts and feelings that have been here tonight.
I think we would recommend denial unless if there were so it concerns that were so huge that we really were worried about it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we kind of have a way to do it soft.
I think we kind of, yeah, I feel like we we mostly like it.
It's it's just strong enough for me on the ownership side that I'm trying to just sort that out, I guess, for myself.
You can vote no.
You know, absolutely, yeah, that's concern. Um.
Okay.
Is there a second on the motion?
A second motion.
Commissioner De Soto. Uh, let's vote on it. Uh, Commissioner De Soto.
I.
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 Nay. Nay.
Okay, uh, the motion or the it passes forward to. Uh. Commissioners South and Hill uh voting no. Thank you. We'll now move on to item. Number four. Uh, yeah, item number four. Provo City Public Works requests approval of an ordinance text amendment to section fifteen point zero three point zero two zero. Uh, parentheses, three, Provo City Code to update the twenty twenty-three standards to twenty twenty-four standards, citywide application. Uh. Director David Day of Public Works presenting. Go ahead.
Thank you. Some of you have uh seen this before, have been here more company for times. Congratulations. Um. So what this is, is every year we look at our public work standards. Um. We take input from staff, developers, engineers, uh, anyone who wants to submit things. And we revise our standards and specifications based on those suggestions. Um. So that's what you're seeing here. Why advance or? Okay, I'll move over here. Is that better? Okay, sorry. I thought maybe it triangulated or something. Um. So the the actual text is really simple. It's just changing the number in the the city ordinance. Um, so that part's really easy, but. Um, just for perspective, this is all the stuff that's contained in that ordinance that you see right there. Um, and we're only adjusting um, two of those items each year. Um, as these other items get updated, we will update those, but this is all of our standards and specifications that govern um, public works type issues. So. It's quite extensive, but hopefully uh you appreciate that you're only looking at part of it. Um, and that's all those standards, uh, the cover pages of all of those standards. Um, just a summary of what what we've done this year. In our standards, uh, drawing details, we have adjusted twenty-eight pages. Little tweaks, uh, we have eliminated uh, three pages and added two. In our Public Works Development Design Standard, which is a separate document, we have edited six pages. So. Um. Here is a s- some some of those pages. There's thirty-nine of these. Um. Just to give you an idea of some of the simpler things that are being adjusted, like on a sewer manhole right there. Um, over on the left, right there, that colored text is the only thing changing there. And and all it's saying is rather than a single layer of mastic, we're doing a double layer. Because we've seen with the single layer, some of the manholes still leak. So we're doing two layers to hopefully eliminate leaks uh, from groundwater coming into our sewer from the outside. So. If you want to see all these, I can show you all of them, but that that's just a sample. Um, I'll click through these. If you want me to stop and explain one, then I will. But here are all of those changes. Um, highlighted in color. On each of the, oh, back.
You don't have to go back. I just want to clarify the ones that don't have any blue on them. Are those just redrawn?
That they're redrawn, but they have a.
Oh, a text explanation. Okay.
Change in the um. The text part of the drawing, so they kind of go together, so. A- and these are easy. These are being removed. Um. A a brand new addition is the um trash enclosure. Um. We haven't had one of those before. Our sanitation uh manager was seeing so many different versions of trash enclosures and was concerned about the ability of a truck to get into them. So this is an a new document giving enough room for a a truck to get in and pick up the trash. So that's a new one there. Uh. Any others? Yeah. Specifications on uh. Asphalt, uh, but bituminous concrete is asphalt, so um. We added our own spec uh, to allow a little more flexibility for contractors to do different types of pavement. Uh, the industry has has gone to what we call a super pave. We found out the super pave is a too rigid, too stiff of a design for our local roads. We get better longevity out of a softer uh, mix that's not. Um. Has more oil content, so it lasts longer. We don't have the heavy loads like UDOT does. And that's what that is. These are our changes to our um. Uh, design standards, and so there's just a few little changes in words and removal of words. So I don't know if you have any questions. Or me regarding any of those. I can go back and we can talk about all of them if you want.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Day. Any questions? Uh. Commissioner Hefner. Mr. Day. Okay, I'm not seeing any. Uh. Let's open this up. Uh. To the public for public hearing portion of the meeting. Is there anyone who from the public that would like to make any comments on? Item number four. I'm not seeing any, therefore we'll close the public comment portion of the hearing. Staff or or commissioners? Time to.
I just think this is exactly what Barbie was talking about. Commissioner De Soto was talking about that this is an area where we say, thank you for doing your job. Thank you for being qualified. Thank you for doing it well. And we trust you. Yeah, thanks for keeping it up to date.
Anyone want to bring forth a motion? I'll bring forth a motion. Uh, I recommend that we or a posi- positive recommendation to city council on item number four. Uh, alright. I'm reading this wrong. I. Yeah. For a positive recommendation to city council, the proposed amendments to public works design standards, uh, item number four, public works requests approval of ordinance text amendment to section. Yeah, fifteen point zero three point zero two zero three, Provo City Code to update twenty twenty-three standards, twenty twenty-four standards. Uh. There a discussion on the motion? Was there a second on the motion?
I'll second.
Let's vote. Uh, Commissioner De Soto.
I.
I.
I vote I.
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 Uh. Rec. Positive recommendation. It's voted six zero. Thank you. Uh, item number five. Well, I'll. I'll read these together. No, separately. Uh, development serv- item number five, development services rec- request an approval of ordinance text amendment to adopt an agro tourism overlay zone, citywide application. Uh, staff member Aaron Ardmore will be presenting.
All right, thank you. All right, so first, kind of how we got here. Uh, just kind of a to take you back back down memory lane, uh, discussion around this topic uh back in July uh, when uh members of the community brought forward a uh a text amendment to the agricultural zone uh, that was discussed here on July twelfth and then later at city council. And uh, the the idea was to come back, for staff to come back with uh, overlay zone rather than uh amending the agricultural zone. Um, so we did that. I'm down September twenty-seventh uh with increased discussion. Uh, there are some things noted from planning commission that uh y'all wanted staff to to look further into, to further analyze, and to come back. Uh, so that's where we're at now. Uh, those topics are are there on your screen. Uh, again, uh, metal as building material, uh, distance requirements, security requirements, uh, materials for the parking lot and the access to the parking lot. And then uh finding a better definition of of live music as it was at the time and and what the limits of noise were. Um, so as staff did a little some more research and it kind of refined codes, um. Try to make some compromises as well. Uh, this is this is what we're coming back with. Um, I've highlighted the changes on this, and they're they're all on the second page there. Uh, so first of all, uh, I guess I'll go in sequential order of the the proposed chapter, parking and access. Uh, we looked at this. We talked about this with fire. We talked about this with engineering. Um, and there was just too many concerns with allowing gravel. Uh. Pulling out mud, rocks and stuff into the street. Um, having a mud pit for a parking lot if these events are held in certain seasons. Uh. Analyzing how many parking stalls are actually there uh without the ability to have strapping and keep strapping uh, when these types of uses require a defined amount of parking. Uh, for all those concerns, uh, we we decided to keep the reference to fourteen thirty-seven, which would say that that would have to be a paved access and parking lot. Uh, the next one down, uh, we changed some wording here in the design standards. Uh. Commissioner Whitlock was was very helpful here uh in noting that we were pretty vague. Uh, so we we talked about non-macrosuitural middle now uh and not permitted as a facade. Uh, so that's any four sides of the building. Uh, the next one down is the hours of operation. We didn't change that, but we did change uh event hall requirements. Uh, we took out the time regulation that was there. Uh, that was a little bit confusing. It kind of conflicted with hours of operation. And in the end, there wasn't a a real strong need for that because we have hours of operation. Uh, so we kept A and B, though we changed the wording there. On A, where it said, it used to say live music, uh, we went with amplified music. We thought that was a a a good way to kind of define the idea of of the planning commission, the concerns that were there, uh, allowing somebody to play the piano or a guitar would be fine for a a group meeting or a family's function. Uh, amplified music is is really what we're, I I think we're trying to uh regulate. Um, and then when alcohol is consumed at the event, as was noted, uh, many of these agricultural zones around the city most likely would not be able to sell alcohol, uh, but people could still bring alcohol. Uh, so I think alcohol consumed at the event uh is is a fair way to address that. And then uh we thought just as an additional help, a reference uh to to our noise standards that are already in code uh in other requirements in number two there. Um. So with these changes, this is this is really what staff is is comfortable and happy with uh moving forward uh to the city council for adoption. Uh, there has also, it should be noted, there's been additional interest in in this overlay uh from from other property owners in the city. Uh, so we're excited to to move this forward and to to try to open up some of these agricultural properties to to different uses. That's all I have.
Anyone have questions for Mr. Ardmore? Okay, thank you. Is there any district representative here? Or or, yeah, any district representative for the city? I'm not seeing any. Uh, with that, we'll open this to the public comment portion of the hearing. Uh. I see a couple members of the public here. Please come forward and state your name. Uh, we're we're doing three minutes for for that, uh, for each, of course.
Judy Finch, I live in West Provo. There's been a lot of discussion about the conditions on this new overlay zone in regards to the meeting hall for rent. There have been some conditions that have been agreed upon and others that have been differences of opinion, and that's okay. Commissioner Will Wellhen had expressed our last meeting how she felt uncomfortable and had various concerns about some of the conditions that were brought up by the staff but not discussed by the city council. In response to her comment, Mr. Pepperoni said that the decision would solely be made by the city council, that the commissioners are a recommending recommending board to the city council, and the staff is also a recommending board to the city council. The staff represents the city and they will make recommendations that protect the city's interests. We have made known our concerns and re- and recommendations from the perspective of a client in our letter. It's okay if we don't all agree. We feel there has been good progress made by the staff and by you commissioners. Our desire is that you would vote this new overlay zone forward to the city council without any further delay. We thank you again for all your time and your effort that has been given to this new agro tourism overlay zone. Thank you.
Any other members of the public want to comment? Okay, seeing none. Uh, we'll go ahead and close close the public comment portion of the hearing. Uh. Commissioners? Uh. This is at least the third time we have this before us. Uh. There's some additional discussion or addressing of concerns. Uh, this is, this is specifically the agro tourism overlay zone. On item number five, we're addressing. Go ahead, Commissioner Jensen.
I um love the simplicity of this. It feels like it's three times as easy as the last one we looked at, and maybe it's just because we're more familiar with it, but it really does seem simpler. I love that we're not making up our own random measurements that relying on previous standards like Utah County's um distance standard or the noise um ordinance or other things that are already set in place. Um, I was uh reviewing the concerns that were expressed in a letter we received. And um, one of them was distance from structures being too strict, but I feel like this only applies to event halls. It doesn't apply to your house or your barn, you know? It's only if you have an event hall that it has to be that distance, and that's because of food. So I'm still okay with that. Um, I still feel we we've seen some other times when not having security for specific reasons um, has backfired and has been a continual burden. And I feel like the two that we've narrowed it down to is most important. We've really talked through them a lot, and they're great reasons to have security. I also think um that cost can be passed along to the client, so it's not like we're trying to destroy someone's business. If somebody insists they have to have that as part of their event, then they can pay for that. Um, I'm good with the hours being where they are because most of these agricultural areas are. Um, I'm good with the hours being where they are because most of these agricultural areas are located in. Semi residential areas, if not completely in residential areas, so those. Those standards and noise standards are compatible with. What we would anticipate being locations. And I'm also completely fine with um, paved parking. I know it's not. What you would expect in an agricultural area, but when parking. Time after time is such a problem in the city, having a place where parking can be marked is a much easier um. Way to use your parking correctly and efficiently. So if you just have a gravel, people can park inefficiently and. Then your bike lanes get filled with gravel. Like I can think of all sorts of reasons why I would love to have a better surface. Um, and it keeps the neighborhood nicer. I know it were, you know, you could argue that it gets rid of the agricultural field, but. I feel like that's a good move, so I love what the city's done with this and I'm super excited to send this forward.
Go ahead, Commissioner Self.
Similarly, I think it's a result of really great thought process and work by staff and by uh, you know. Concerned members of the public and I think it's, yeah, I think it's a a real win. Um, I think there is one question I have, maybe Mr. Ardmore can help me with this one. Um, with respect to uh, the parking standards, what would recycled asphalt? How would that fall? Recycled asphalt that's been striped like what we see across the lot here and at the airport?
Yeah, so we can use that as temporary parking as we are at the old city hall site.
Right.
Um, but for a a permanent where something like an event hall would come in with a a project plan, which is a permanent structure, permanent use. Uh, we we would demand the fourteen thirty seven code be enacted.
Okay. Yeah, how how long is that temporary thing? I mean, because I we we uh, temporary could be. Years?
Temporary is subjective, isn't it? Uh, so so that's why we tried to just kind of stay away from that and this. Uh, cite the fourteen thirty seven.
I would like to call the airport to the dais, please.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner De Soto?
I I agree with um. I forgot your last name.
Commissioner Self.
No, uh, yes, but. Jensen, Commissioner Jensen, sorry.
Uh, the airport comment?
I I agree about her comments about this uh, this overlay. Strike the airport comment from the record. So if we all agree, do we need to talk some more? Just do you want us to hold hands and sing a song?
I'm ready, I'm ready for a motion if anyone wants to go on forward.
I'll make a motion. Do we send a positive recommendation on item number five? Development Services requests approval of an ordinance text amendment to adopt. To adopt an agrotourism overlay A T zone, citywide application.
There's discussion on the motion?
I'll second that.
Okay. Uh, let's vote on it then. Uh, start with Commissioner De Soto.
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Okay, it's a. Unanimous six zero vote of. Recommending approval.
Thank you to everyone who. Gave such good feedback that we could. Work this whittle this down. Awesome.
Alright, let's, oh, this is totally different, huh? Item number six. You can tell I prepared. Item number six, Development Services requests approval of ordinance text. Ordinance text amendments to to section fourteen point three four point four eight zero sidewalk cafes. To update standards and regulations for outdoor seating, citywide application. Uh, Mr. Ardmore?
Thank you again. Uh, so just quick background on this one, uh. As business has become more popular downtown, we've seen some concerns. Uh, Parks and Rec has seen some concerns, engineering has seen some concerns. Uh, so we have this code, sidewalk cafes in in the zoning code. Uh, that was. There but but not really looked at or are used efficiently. Um, so. We wanted to to look at it, make it better and kind of. Start using it in a better way to to help provide consistency and safety downtown. Um. Kind of the general changes to it, uh, new street separation requirements uh, for these sidewalk cafes or outdoor dining for the. Travel lanes, uh, umbrella height requirements when they're involved. Uh, clarification on responsible parties and uh. Adding a a seasonal operational period. Uh, so the language. Is here. Um, so this has been a team effort uh, working with different departments and and the downtown Provo Inc. Uh. Representatives uh, to to come up with these standards. Uh, I think. At the end, we're all happy with these. Um. Uh, Parks and Recs really wanted to make sure that we had these uh, the responsibility spelled out uh, for for maintenance and trash and things like that. And uh, I think we got there. I think we we, if we are able to pass these, it's going to provide a more consistent, safe downtown. Um. So that's all I have unless you have any questions for me.
Commissioners, uh, Commissioner Jensen?
The one thing I didn't understand is in section one C, which is actually not one that has a change to it. Um, it says if it's designed to have more than one row of tables and chairs. A non side obscuring removable barrier, not more than three feet high and closing the tables and chairs shall be constructed. Is that on the inside sidewalk side or on the roadside? Or around the entire thing?
So that is around the dining area, right? So if you think of.
So like over by gurus, they have one that's elevated and it has a black. Metal fence.
So that's, that's not what this is addressing. This is addressing more like um, the the Mexican restaurant that burned down.
Mm-hmm, Los Hermanos.
Los Hermanos, sorry, thank you. Uh, it used to have right outside their doors, they had uh, the kind of temporary barrier. Uh, recently, the French restaurant next door has done the same type of thing. Uh, so this is trying to address that.
So it's the ones that are on in the sidewalk space that people would have to go around.
Right.
Just wanted to make sure that wasn't something that needed to be modified.
Thank you.
And is is it understood who each of the sidewalk cafes belongs to? Or is it up to somebody to say we want this to be ours? And then that agreement, like as far as this rule of the cafe owner or operator has to maintain it. What happens if somebody isn't currently claiming it or if it's in the off season and it's changed hands, but nobody's in charge of it? Like, is that covered in here somewhere?
It's a great question. Um, so because these are in the public right of way. They are by right public space. Um, you can make some assumptions and infer. Who's using it the most? Um, but that that is uh, that's going to continue to be a. Uh. A job of Parks and Rec as they maintain Center Street as a linear park. And um, with our department with economic development, works closely with Downtown Provo Inc. And making sure that all of the cafes, restaurants, businesses that make use of this. Sharing that responsibility.
So it's possible for. One set of tables to be used by anyone who's eating at a nearby restaurant.
Right.
Yet the ones immediately adjacent have to keep, but I just feel like that's kind of a gray area that's not addressed here. If they're really a shared space and not an assigned space, then it's possible for somebody to say, well, none of our customers go outside.
Right.
So that's his problem with the trash.
I think that's a big part of of bringing the sound and messaging. Uh, that's something that our own Keith Murray uh, Maury is. Is planning to do in the next year um, with the Downtown Provo Inc. Um, is is getting that message out and it's, you know, it's a. You're right, it is, it is vague, but it's vague for a reason. We don't want.
Someone claiming.
A business to feel like they own. Uh, the table from their their. Their storefront because it is public right of way.
Okay, but you feel like this language is is as strong as it needs to be to accomplish the purposes, the safety purposes.
Uh, specifically Parks and Rec felt good about adding uh, this language and and feel like this will be enough to do what they need to do.
Do you want to say what a bollard is in one B?
So yeah, so uh. Everybody's, okay.
Am I the only one who doesn't know what a bollard is?
Uh, possibly.
A ballard.
Ballard.
I would recommend more user friendly language. It's possible that a restaurateur won't know what that is.
Fair enough.
Just consider the user. It's not actually these people.
Okay.
And they can Google it. That's just me.
No, good point.
I have a question. But kind of back to that one that's not even being changed. I'm just curious. Uh, C in one C. What is the purpose of that? To have? A barrier around. Multiple rows?
So. There's an issue when you start to put a bunch of tables and chairs out in the sidewalk in front of a a door. Or windows, uh, those start to spread out more and more and that six feet of ADA space goes away pretty quick.
Yeah, so it's to keep the seating, the chairs from scooting out.
Kind of, yeah, hem those in.
Okay.
Yeah.
I would also note I've eaten at these cafes and sometimes you start getting pedestrian traffic filtering through the tables instead of staying on the sidewalk. So it also helps kind of separate those.
If there was a rogue biker or skateboarder, it would give you a little safety barrier.
True.
Dog attacks, think of all the things this could protect you from. Way to think forward.
That was already in there. Thanks.
Uh, yeah, any other questions for our Mr. Ardmore? I'm not seeing any, uh. I'm not seeing any district representatives or any other members of the public other than city employees. Um, I'm going to open up public comment portion of the hearing. Uh. Anyone's welcome to come up. I'm not seeing anyone come up. We'll close the public comment portion of the hearing. Uh. Commissioners, further discussion on item number six? Or does anyone feel bold enough to? Make a motion without further discussions?
There's just one tiny typo.
Go ahead.
The last line on the first page, the I is like a little, a little orphan. From the rest of insurance. I don't know if that's just on this.
Okay, so I converted the word document to PDF four times and this kept happening. I kept trying to do different spacing, no idea why.
You can do a hard return. It knocks it.
What? I never asked the experts to fix it for me.
Hard return, it puts the whole word onto the next line, no matter what else automatically would happen. The I.
The I on the bottom of page one, it belongs to the insurance on the top of page two. Thank you.
What's that? What's your emotion? Please.
Shall I take a shot at it here?
Yeah.
My first one. Um, I move that uh, the staff forward a positive recommendation. Um, of the proposed amendments uh, for approval to the city council. Uh, for item number six, Development Services requests approval of ordinance text amendments. To section fourteen point three four point four eight zero sidewalk cafes to update standards and regulations for outdoor seating. Citywide application.
There a discussion on the motion?
I think you would just say that we forward a positive recommendation, not that the staff forward it. I don't know if that matters. Okay.
No. We, planning commission. Um, okay.
Yeah.
Is there a second on the motion?
I'll second.
Uh. Let's vote on it. Uh. Commissioner Soto?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Uh. Motion to afford a recommendation of approval passes six zero unanimously. Um.
I move that we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone, for your help.
Hey. That was early.